Hi, everybody. Today is Tuesday, April 8th, 2025, and the time is 5:30 PM. We're here for the regular session of the Coppell City Council. We do have a quorum present, so I am calling the meeting to order. We will be convening into executive session in the first-floor conference room. At the end of the executive session, I'll come back out and announce work session, at which time the public is invited and welcome to join us. Thank you very much. Good afternoon. The time is 6:17 PM. We have adjourned from executive session, and we are moving into work session in the first-floor conference room. The public is invited and encouraged to join us. Thank you very much. Work session. We have three agenda items. The first one is a discussion of the agenda. Anybody have any questions or questions about the agenda?
I did.
Yes.
Let me just get to my notes here.
Yeah, right. Are you going to derail us? He's ignoring everybody.
He's concentrating on finding it.
Yes, I am. I'm sorry. Were you talking to me, the guy?
We just said that that's new.
Oh, I know. I'm just, I'm breaking out some new ground here.
Did that today. Looking for a text message and it was like, no, it's here.
I mean, there's such, there's such great questions. I don't want to deprive anybody. Let's see. Here we go.
Go ahead.
Am I good? Okay. Okay. On Agenda Item 10, there was no indication that there would be a public hearing?
That's just approval of a, of a warrant.
And number 10 is the color construction.
Yeah. No, no, no public hearing. Okay, okay. Just magnitude?
Yeah.
And then 12 was answered with respect to how many signs we have. On consent Agenda C, I had a question about Section 12 dot 31 dot 6 dash 18. Library or museum? It says 10 spaces plus one space for every 300 square feet. It wouldn't seem to me that the history museum in Old Town would meet that requirement. So I was curious.
Matt? Okay. So.
Matt's so tired of me.
No, not at all, not at all. So, repeat your question. I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So when we're looking at parking, there's the parking Section 18 for library or museum. And it's 10 spaces plus one space for every 300 square feet. Would that, how do we apply that to the museum in Old Town?
So that's a fee, and we've already parked it.
Okay. Okay, so that, we squared that away?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Question solved.
With the right phone.
Yeah, yeah, with the right phone. That's all I needed.
All right. Any other questions on Agenda?
Mike, flag.
Remash?
Thank you, Mayor. My questions that I had said, um, will they address during the presentation? Or do you want me to try and ask?
If they're consent agenda items, they won't be presented.
Okay.
If it's an agenda item, it'll be.
I, I had to look it up first, so.
I do give you the opportunity during open session to ask questions.
Okay. Let me quickly look at.
Or you can do it here.
You asked about E?
Yes.
There are about four questions on that about how's a project get identified? How's a project prioritized? How's a project awarded? And how long is the quote warranty work? And how long does the project last?
Great.
So. And are you asking now?
Yes, sir.
Oh, okay. Where's my G?
Right here.
Okay.
So I'm going to pull up, I'm going to pull up your list because I have it here. So make sure I answer your questions.
Make sure you use the right phone.
Yeah. Make sure I use the right phone. So I'll be, so. When is the project first added to the staff's list? So they're typically added through different methods. Either we observe them through periodic inspections. We, we try to inspect creeks and drainage ways on an annual basis as part of our SOP. And so what we do is we monitor them, and if we see something, we'll add it to a list for continuous inspection. If we notice some degradation or erosion, then we'll add it to the list. And depending on the infrastructure nearby, what the impacts may be, whether it's a residential home, whether it's a roadway or other utility or infrastructure, then it moves up the priority based off the risk. There are other ways homeowners, so we don't get on private property in creeks, but the homeowners will let us know, hey, there's a creek in the park, such as Hunterwood. Hunterwood Park is one that we've, we've walked and we've inspected and we've noticed that. So there's a project currently designed for that. Great Line Springs Park's another one. Great Line Creek Park is another one. So there's parks that sometimes we don't get to, or if we don't get to it, a homeowner will recognize it and let us know. And then based off the risk, we'll prioritize. So this one being Water's Channel throughout the Sandy Lake. We noticed this a few, a few years ago where the side closest to Sandy Lake started sloughing off. So we went and put in a temporary repair, which has held up for several years. But then we've noticed other areas along the south side of the channel. And so we, we started design last year, and the draft design was complete, or late last year. And so we just went out to award this. It was going to take care of the erosion along that, that channel there. So based on that, that's, that's how we identify and move up the list. And the privatization is based off of the risk or impacts that may occur adjacent to the project. Lifespan is typically 20 to 50 years. That we use different methods of construction. If it's constructed right, maintained properly, it can last, it'll, it'll last a long time. And then as far as the warranty, we typically require two-year maintenance bond, warranty period on workmanship and materials. And so we inspect it before the two years and if there's any defects or facing workmanship. Now, natural causes is different, but if it's, it's based on workmanship and materials, then they'll come out of there within the two years.
Thank you.
Yep.
Then you asked about G. I mean, did you want me to go through the whole list?
I think the G part was also on the consent.
That was the Playwell.
Yes.
Okay, so you do want it. Okay. Jessica?
Yeah, so Playwell, you had asked about giving the low bid. So it selected its best value, the best value in terms of it was the, the most responsible bid that we had based on references, cost also being a factor. And then I think you also had a lifespan question as well. So most playgrounds are about 20 years with diligent maintenance, so.
I, I remember my specific question now.
The 20% score.
Yeah, they, they had gotten the complete points for the price. So is it fair to assume that they were also the lowest bid?
Defer to Adam on that.
They were, they were the lowest bid out of the two that were moved forward in the process out of the seven.
Thank you. Thank you.
You had other questions. I'm not sure, I'm not sure how you want, I'm not sure how you want me to handle this.
Those were not part of the consent agenda, right? The other questions were, I think, Item 10.
Yeah, Item 10, and your question was, was the Parks and Rec Board aware and involved with the dog park? The answer is completely all the way through.
Okay. Specific, I mean, for the benefit of others, my question was the scope identified for the dog park. Did the Parks and Rec Board have a chance to look at it? And did they actually approve the scope? And you're saying yes.
They did.
Thank you, sir.
I don't know if there's anything. Oh, and you asked about signs. So, but somewhere between five and 10 non-conforming signs built prior to 1990. We are not requiring them to remove those signs or to rebuild those signs, but this was a result of a retail roundtable that Mindy hosts.
Yes.
And they asked if the city council would consider, hey, we, we would consider replacing these signs if we could go back with at least the same height, the same width. Yes, we can make them look architectural and more like the center, but is that something the council would consider? So we have brought that forward. That's input from the private sector saying this is something we would like you to consider.
Okay.
And just as a follow-on to that, I remember when that was originally discussed, it's actually easing the burden on the replacement of the signage, so.
And that was the point of my question, Mayor. I would rather, my personal preference is that the city contribute to helping them swap the sign as opposed to letting them change it or keep it the same way.
But we're not requiring that they change it.
Right, we're not requiring. We could incentivize them to change it to the core.
You're welcome to make that discussion on, in the chamber.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions? All right, let's move on to Item B, which is a discussion regarding the future operations of Rolling Oaks Memorial Center.
Sure.
There we are.
All right, so good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm back again here this evening to follow up with you regarding the discussion from the January 14th council meeting. So also here with me tonight is Tyler Peace, who's our cemetery manager. They can help, help answer any questions that may come up. So the purpose of this presentation is to discuss more details about the future operations of Rolling Oaks Memorial Center and to share with you the recommendations for each of those operational aspects. As a reminder, Rolling Oaks Memorial Center is funded through a special revenue fund, not the general fund. This means its operations are funded entirely by revenue generated from sales within Rolling Oaks, rather than property taxes. So at the January meeting, we specifically discussed the operational philosophy of Rolling Oaks Memorial Center and what was important for the council to see happen within those operations. As a follow-up to the last meeting, you asked me to bring back information regarding the privatization of Rolling Oaks Memorial Center and to give more details regarding the philosophy and operational next steps. So specific items we will, we will discuss are prices and rate increases, number of plots sold per person, and a small expansion of in-ground spaces. So this discussion is important to the implementation of next steps at Rolling Oaks. Whatever the direction council gives, we would still need to, to look at implementing several of these recommendations to make sure Rolling Oaks is operating at a sustainable level. Once we gain council guidance, staff will begin an implementation plan for adjustments to fees and operational policies and procedures. The ideal target date for this would be to increase pricing beginning June 1st for any services provided under our current amended operations plan and to implement additional operational changes by October 1st. So through discussions with Doug Miller at Johnson Consulting, we gained more insight and knowledge into privatizing a cemetery operation, also described as a management agreement. So by engaging in a contract with a management company, we would operate the cemetery similar to the operations at Rolling Oaks Funeral Home. This agreement would be handled by a private company in the cemetery industry. This company would operate the cemetery as a for-profit business and would frequently monitor market pricing to create a regional interest for the cemetery. Through this management agreement, the city would still own the property and maintain some of the building and would potentially gain indirect revenue. This would most likely happen through a percentage, just as our current agreement with the funeral home. So our current agreement with the funeral home is a standard annual rental fee plus 6% of their annual adjusted gross revenues. So the city does not have allowable rights to how the funeral home operates their business unless it was written into that original agreement. Through an agreement, we would be allowed to negotiate certain policies and allowable procedures, but the contractor may not agree to those terms. This option would remove city staff from all day-to-day operations at Rolling Oaks Memorial Center and would allow the contractor to operate the cemetery to their best interest. While a management agreement can be done, it will take some time to work through our current operations and source private businesses to gain interest in Rolling Oaks. So next, I want to discuss the cemetery operations, looking into the future at Rolling Oaks Memorial Center. So through this, it's important to make sure that we can maximize the growth, revenue opportunities, and customer care through best practices and procedural changes. We will go into discussion and recommendations for the following items. So the philosophy of Rolling Oaks Memorial Center, price rate increases, number of plots sold per person, and a small in-ground expansion. As I walk through these next four items, you will see how they link together and how making one change would affect the others. As I stated earlier, whatever direction council gives, we would still need to look at an implementation, implementation plan for these four items. So at the last meeting, we discussed two potential operational philosophies, a community-focused cemetery and a regional-focused cemetery. The original intent for Rolling Oaks was to offer an amenity for the community where we could provide a family community for a lifetime. So over the years, due to beauty, location, affordability, available inventory, and even staffing changes, Rolling Oaks evolved into a regional amenity and created a draw for families and funeral homes across the metroplex. Moving forward, staff would recommend that Rolling Oaks Memorial Center be prioritized as a community-focused cemetery to ensure sustainability, availability, and quality for current and future families and for both residents and non-residents. Staff do want to ensure that the Coppell community is prioritized with the understanding that Rolling Oaks would not be able to sustain its operations financially with only Coppell residents. Staff have worked through what a residency verification process would look like and any other operational or system changes that would need to be implemented for this to be the primary focus. So as you know, Rolling Oaks is well below market prices for in-ground burials, other fees associated with burial services, and for resale items. It is highly recommended by our consultant and staff that we increase prices and rates for services at Rolling Oaks. This would create a pricing structure that includes a resident rate and a standard rate. Staff would require specific documentation to receive the resident pricing, and it would result in a higher premium for those who do not qualify as a resident. With this new pricing and keeping residents in mind, this new structure would discontinue the 20% resident discount. Instead, verified residents will be eligible for a special resident-only rate for those that qualify. We would remove and not allow discounts of any kind. This new pricing structure would include any burial options that is not currently under contract and would allow Rolling Oaks to create additional revenue opportunities that fit within the price market for cemetery needs in the metroplex. Through this initial pricing increase, we would also increase service fees for opening and closings, installation of monuments, and second internment rights. With guidance and approval, and while we are still under our current amended operations plan, we would like to begin updating this pricing structure beginning June 1st. So the current policy, which was council-approved, states that a single person can purchase up to 15 spaces per contract. This current policy as written lacks clarification and leaves room for interpretation. Moving forward, staff would like to be more clear about that policy and would recommend the change from 15 spaces per contract to allow the sale of six spaces per single person or household, but not both. This recommendation would prohibit any single-person household or large group from purchasing a large number of spaces for the purpose of transfer, transfer, or resale. Recognizing that Rolling Oaks is a highly desirable community asset, we believe it's important to adopt practices unlike those of private for-profit cemeteries where spaces, space allowances are generally unlimited. Creating this clarity would allow for the interpretation, would allow for no interpretation and would create the absolute max of six spaces sold to a single person or household. So as you know, our analysis indicates a low level of available in-ground inventory, posing a potential risk to the operational sustainability of Rolling Oaks. Recognizing this challenge, we note that while we have used over just half of our existing 36-acre property, the remaining area provides opportunity for in-ground inventory and cremation expansion in the future. In accordance with our consultant's recommendation, we propose a strategy of developing a small portion of land and implementing price increases. This approach is essential to, is essential to generate the additional revenue required to sustain the cemetery's operations over an extended period of time for our residents. So currently, we have two gardens, which, as they sit today, have open space adjacent to them and room to expand to create more in-ground options. The Garden of Legacy, which is highlighted in yellow there, and the Garden of Memories, which were both opened in Phase 2, have space located to the east. So Garden of Memories is the one just to the south of that photo right there. So to further enhance our burial options and accommodate customer preferences, staff recommend expanding the open area adjacent to the Garden of Legacy, which again is highlighted in yellow. And by adding lot pins and irrigations, we could accomplish this. This initial expansion is projected by contractors to create an additional 1,900 in-ground spaces for single depth with some of these spaces offering double-depth rights. So allowing that double-depth right will also provide an even greater capacity, maximizing the land availability. Recognizing the financial implications of implementing lot pins and irrigation, our assessment indicates a significant future need that will ultimately create a favorable return on investment. Please note that this recommendation is not considered as part of a Phase 3 expansion, and there would be additional opportunity to expand the land near the Garden of Memories later with a closely matched number of spaces. So we've discussed a lot this evening so far. So for a quick recap of our topics, we discussed cemetery privatization, operational philosophy, price and rate increases, plots sold per person, and a small expansion. If council decides to move forward with the shift in operational philosophy at Rolling Oaks Memorial Center, staff will begin working towards these new policies, procedures, and operations immediately. These items would become policies and standard operating procedures and would be written in a way that would have little room for interpretation. We would look to implement any price increases by June 1st, and by October 1st, we would implement operational changes and open availability for the new garden area. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions that will help guide your discussion.
Thank you very much. Council, Don.
Couple of questions. So the resident rate and the standard rate, how, how's the standard rate going to be determined? Is it going to be like the general market rate? Or is it going to be above what would be the, the regional rate?
What we've proposed so far is basically in line with the market. It's not the highest. It's not the lowest.
Okay. Okay, and just for where my head is, I guess I'm, I'm in favor of it being on the high end of the, to have it open for the region, but I, I would still want to incentivize it to be a local community amenity. So that would be my two cents on that. And then the plots per person, and you may have said this, was it six per person or family? Is that what it said?
Yes.
Okay, so you couldn't have husband or wife coming and get 12?
Correct. They could not get 12, right.
Okay. I'd be in favor of staff moving ahead. Mark?
So you mentioned that there was a, a portion where you would do single-depth burials and then some you would do, make available for double-depth. Why wouldn't you do all double-depth?
Tyler, could I refer you to that question?
That's a good question. So in some of our areas, you really don't know until you start digging. And so not every particular space will qualify for that. And so in our existing garden, kind of some of the older areas, sometimes when you're digging 12, 13 feet, you might come across big bulges. So a lot of times, not every particular space will be available.
Okay.
So once we started with irrigation and installing that, we would have more of an idea of what spaces would qualify.
Then, next question, you were talking about implementing the pricing structure June 1st. Why do we have to wait that long?
That was really based on this, that we don't have to wait that long. Based on this discussion, I just wanted to make sure there was enough time for you guys to have a valid discussion, as well as staff to implement the changes within our system, our procedures, our policies, all of that.
Because I, I would like to see us move quickly on that and the proof of residency requirements and for, and limiting the number of spaces being able to be purchased by.
Thank you. Jim?
Yeah, so, you know, the last time, the first issue, cemetery privatization. The reason I threw that out really was because I just felt like we should look at every option. I feel like we're kind of at a hard reset on all this right now. But I have to tell everybody, I received a lot of calls from people, and I was really glad that I did, and they were very touching stories. And it, it really struck me what a profound project this was. Whether we truly appreciated just how profound at the time or not, I don't know. But, you know, there, the stories that I, that I received and, and, you know, the things that people said really struck me how intimate and how profoundly, what a profound commitment this is that the city has made. And so given the, the loss of control and the other issues you've identified, I think correctly, I would not favor privatization under any circumstances at this point. So I just want to throw that out. I don't think the standard rate is high enough. I, I wouldn't even be in favor of an abeyance of sales to anyone that's not a resident for some period of time, just to, you know, this was supposed to be a community amenity. And to me, that suggests it's for people that have made this their community. And, you know, I think that was one of the more alarming things about what we've learned, in my view, was just, we, we kind of lost, we lost that. And because we were underpriced, you know, people were coming in that have no connection at all with this community. And I, I'd like to try to arrest that as much as possible. So I would be in favor of an abeyance of any sales to anyone that doesn't meet the residency requirement for some period of time, 12 months, whatever. And, and I also, to the extent that we didn't do that or that once we resumed the sales, I would be in favor, Don's suggestion, that we err on the very high side. would be in favor, Don's suggestion, that we err on the very high side for that. And then, you know, on the batch sales, that's obviously been a problem. So one thing that I would encourage is that, you know, if a family comes in and buys six plots, I think our contract should have a right of first refusal that when they, I mean, what if they all moved to Cincinnati and the entire family's there and they decide, well, this is where we live now, so we're going to, you know, bury our parents here and not have to go all the way back to Capel. I think we should incorporate a right of first refusal so that they would first have to offer the resale of those lots to us. Otherwise, we're just, we're creating a loophole that would just open the door to the batch sales anyways, it would just be six plots at a time. You could have straw men buy the six plots and then just sell them on the open market. We wouldn't have any control over that. So I would incorporate a right of first refusal in all of our contracts to the extent that anyone wants to sell back a plot, they should offer it to us first. Other than that, I think the expansion plans and all like that are solid. Y'all done a great job.
Thank you.
So Kevin?
Thank you. Community-focused cemetery, yes. I'm good with the resident rate and standard rate. I do agree with my colleagues here that I think that we need to be on the higher end for the, for standard rates. I'm cool with the six plots per household, you know, or individual, that's fine. Expansion, sounds good. I did have a specific question about former residents, that was there any consideration of that that might want to, you know, at one point, they did live here, but, you know, I do think about people who have maybe had to move to like a, you know, let's say a memory care facility or something like that. They can't physically, they are able to live on their own here in town, but maybe they won't have their final resting here. What kind of consideration is that advised?
Yes, and we actually offer that now to anyone who's been a resident for 10 years or more and have moved away from Capel. They can come back. And so what we're proposing now with our verification documents is they have to provide some type of proof of that because what we've had in the past of, I lived here for 10 years, absolutely. So with a, you know, former utility bill or tax statement or something that they could prove to us, but absolutely.
Like they could go to D.C.A.N. and print off the history of?
100%.
Live here?
Yeah.
And so it's a 10, like you're required to live here for 10 years to qualify for that?
That's how it's been written, yes.
Okay, so I just wanted to confirm that.
Absolutely.
And then, in our previous discussion, based on kind of, I'm going to throw this out here, I'm finding a way, but I brought up the idea of people who worship in Capel that maybe aren't residents, but they do have a community here. I just wanted to bring that back up to see if there were any thoughts or do we really want to live like hardcore on have to be a resident here? I'm finding a way, I just want to bring that topic back up because I did bring it up in the January meeting. So I didn't know if my colleagues had any thoughts on, on, yeah, I do think about our, you know, our St. Anne's community, very large. It is a regional draw, but I understand that, you know, if we're focusing on Capel-centric, I'm okay with that, I just wanted to bring it up.
Which they're still, I'm so sorry, I was going to say, anybody who wants to come in could still, they would just pay a standard rate as opposed to a resident rate. So still allowable.
My opinion is that's fair because they're not a taxpayer.
I just, I just want to throw it out there, I'm hearing, I'm hearing good things on that, so.
So definitely still allowable, just at that standard rate.
I really appreciate the suggestions here, I think it's going to move us in the right direction and I am, I receive some of the same feedback that you did as well about not privatizing, so I'm glad that we're making these steps forward to, I think, bring this facility up to where it needs to be for our citizens, so thank you.
As did I hear some feedback. Anyway, let's see, Bijou?
And thank you, Mayor, surely thank you for the presentation. You mentioned in your statement, property tax was not used for the operation of our OMC. How many staff do we have in our OMC?
There are three full-time staff members.
So how do we pay their salary, their pension and health insurance?
So it's a special revenue fund, so the revenues that come in are the expenses that go out that pay that.
So for the past five years, did we manage to pay their salaries?
Absolutely, yes, and we are still managing right now. We still have a fund balance available to sustain us.
And for digging the land and all that, that the consumers pay, what are the other operational costs? That's what I'm trying to.
Yeah, so we have lots of maintenance costs, obviously mowing, landscaping, which you guys approved that contract about almost a year ago now. So landscaping, maintenance, we have upkeep of facility, obviously just basic operations, and then we do have to pay the contractors for opening and closing. So we are paid that payment, but then we have to pay the contractor for their services. So it's almost a pass-through fee for that. We have obviously just your basic administrative costs that come through that. We have also, when we are selling markers and monuments, so any type of resale property, we also have to pay for that cost upfront and then we pay the contractor for that. So that is something that we also budget for even though we are paid back for that.
Okay. I'm in favor of us controlling the cemetery, that's my recommendation.
Ramesh?
Thank you, Mayor. Surely, thank you for the wonderful presentation. And I had asked some questions via email and thanks for the wonderful answers. One of the questions I had asked is if we had a family that had more than six members and I believe the answer is, we will address it on a case-by-case basis and not say, no, thank you for that.
That's correct.
The other question I had was about the, if we're going to have a policy on a percentage of plots for residents versus non-residents. And the way I read the answer is, I believe for us to be on a sustainable path, we do want some non-residents paying the standard rate, right?
That is correct.
And I really appreciate what my colleagues are saying about the standard rate being above the market rate, but if we price ourselves a little too aggressively, then our math would not work because for us to be sustainable, we do want a certain percentage of non-residents to come in. And then today, the number may be 50%. I would recommend that we look at it on an annual basis so that, two councils down, we don't have the same experience that we had this time that said, how did this happen? Why did we let it go so wrong? So I would say, let us look at it on an annual basis.
Look at the pricing structure or the percentage, just so I'm clear?
Pricing, about pricing, I will leave it to you guys, but the percentage of resident versus non-resident, I think the council should have an opinion on that, if not every year, at least once in two years. That would be my recommendation. And overall, I'm in, I'm in support of staff's recommendation, so thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Brianna?
Yes, thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I kind of with Jim on the fact that I know I was one of the ones that also had asked for information about privatization. I think if anything, I was looking at it from the standpoint of what are our options?
Right.
Because sometimes you can enter into a business that really isn't our forte, right? But I think you've done a great job of just outlining what was the intent of the cemetery when we decided to open that cemetery. We wanted it to be community-focused and we wanted this to be part of the community of a lifetime. And so I think there's, there's been a lot of learnings along the way and I think that that's what you do. We did that with the Senior Center too, right? And so you learn along the way. And so I think if we can just have some open dialogue on a frequent basis of just, you know, kind of to your point, Ramesh, on just how are things going? What is that, what is that ratio? Do we need to adjust accordingly? I do want to ensure that our residents have, you know, that resident rate because we want them to be able to have kind of that opportunity to be there and have their family. And then I think also the decrease of allowance per person makes sense because unfortunately, sometimes people take advantage of that. And I think we've done that as far as residential rate and standard rate, even in other facilities that we have. So, you know, I leave that to you guys on what is that right delta that we look at where that we're competitive, but yet we're not pricing ourselves out of the market, but yet we're incentivizing our residents to be here and not go somewhere else. So I do like that. I would actually love for them to come, maybe, you know, in the beginning as we start to make some changes, just to give a report. I'd say once a year, but maybe even twice a year, just to let us know how you're doing. Maybe after the expansion happens, but I just want to have a, some sort of regular cadence on what's happening. I think that's really important because unlike the Senior Center where we've got liaisons, we don't necessarily have liaisons at the cemetery.
Yeah.
And I think it would just be good to know that. So, and then to your point, Kevin, I appreciate that because we do have a lot of people who worship in Capel who don't live here. I think we, I would say, we open up Pandora's box only because it would be hard for our staff to be able to validate or verify if they go to the church unless they are members and then whatever, they're not registered members. And I just don't want to get into that, but I think that's something for us to maybe consider later if for some reason we end up in a situation where that seems to be what we're hearing from our residents. So that was a lot to say, thank you, and I appreciate this and I agree with staff's recommendation.
Don?
One point of clarification, a few slides back, you had a stat that had, I think you were 70% non-resident or something along those lines?
That was from January.
Yeah, that's on the, that was in the January presentation, correct.
And after this new 1,900, if you use this stat, that 50% would be, it would be a mix, sort of a 50-50 mix, but that's 50-50 mix of the new plots, is that? You're not saying the whole mix would come down to 50%?
Right, yes.
It would be just?
That's what we're.
From this point forward, the mix would?
That's what we're anticipating. Now, obviously, because it's a percentage, it would level off somewhere in there, but we are anticipating right now that that percentage would go to about 50-50 in this first new phase.
So the overall mix is still going to stay closer to 7%?
Right.
Right, come down a little bit, okay. I just wanted to clarify that.
Yes.
Thanks.
Jim?
This is a little off-charts, if you don't have information, I understand completely, but we have privatized the funeral home and some of the input I got on that was mixed. How often does that contract renew and how do we, what rights do we have with respect to the review of their performance as effectively a vendor of the city?
Right, so that contract was initiated in 2008 and has not been renewed since then. So there are a couple clauses in there that we can look at for performance and certain qualifications. We have not historically done that, we've just operated as is. So it's definitely something Tyler and I have discussed about making sure we're keeping up with that contract a little more.
Yeah, I think when you're in a long-term contract situation and you have no merit review, I think it's easy to get to a point where we might not be happy with the performance based upon what we're hearing from our residents. And I heard a very mixed review.
It's good feedback. Kevin?
I just want to reiterate something that Mark said about the launching of all the changes. I would love to see, we not sit on a June 1, like launch date. If, I completely understand that staff needs time to make all the changes, you know, operationally and in the systems and stuff like that, but if that's ready to go two weeks ahead, I would love to see that launched as soon as possible. So really appreciated that suggestion on there, but, but I mean, obviously, I don't want to say you have to do it because you guys need the time and the flexibility to be able to administratively do all the changes that you need, but I would be in favor of those changes happening sooner than June 1st if prepared to launch properly.
I appreciate that feedback. And we've done a lot of prep and Tyler's done a lot of prep to make sure we even had all of the, you know, pros and cons to everything, so a lot of that pre-work is already done, so it's just the other side to implement. But, perfect.
Bijou?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I want to agree with Jim, I also heard mixed reviews from the funeral home services. So what do we need to do to review this contract? What needs to take place?
So I'd have to look at, obviously, some of the stipulations in there, work with Bob with legal and see what that looks like. So we do have a really good relationship with the funeral home, that has not always been the case, I will say that. And so recently, especially the last year, we've had a better, a better relationship with them where we can have more feedback and engagement to make sure they understand this is what we're hearing, this is what you're hearing type thing. So, but we can definitely look at the contract, I can get with Bob to see what the, you know, legality of that is.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
If anyone wants to pass that information, what the negative is, we need to tell staff so we can address it with them and maybe even have them come make presentations and manage to think that that's appropriate.
I'd still put them on like a 36-month term though. I wouldn't just have an open term.
Yeah, they're a national firm, I do know that, so they're a big, big firm.
Okay, I had a couple of comments. I actually agree with you on the abeyance of the, of the non-resident sale. I think that's an excellent idea. The right of first refusal is absolutely spot-on. I think that would be, you know, one of the things that we don't have going now that is absolutely, needs to be fixed. I did have a question on the cost, what's the ratio of the difference between a resident rate and a non-resident rate? Just the ratio.
On the difference of the rate? It's about $1,000 of what we're.
No. Times three, times four, times two?
Um.
Well, what are they generally, I guess, would be a good?
The ratio of, say that, repeat your question again, so I understand, sorry.
The ratio of the non-resident rate to the resident rate?
What we're looking at as far as how many sales for each?
Cost.
They want to know the percentage difference between.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Got it, okay, so, yes, we're looking at, it's like a 25% difference between the two costs.
I think it ought to be more than that.
Yeah.
Three times.
I was thinking three times.
Yeah, I think it needs to be enough that if, they have to really want it to, as a non-resident.
Okay, sorry for understanding.
That's why I asked the question, I was afraid it was going to be low, that's why I asked the question.
We can always adjust it down if our sales get stunted or whatever.
Yes, yes, we can. You might want to look at a larger ratio there, just, I had a couple of other ones. Timing, I agree with Kevin or Jim on the, you know, sooner is better. Mark? Sorry, one of you guys in black suits. And Ramesh?
Thank you, Mayor. Again, I appreciate what Jim is saying about the price. From my understanding, and maybe if all of us look at the numbers, we have a better idea. If I have to use approximate example, if it takes us $100 to run this cemetery and if we are discounting our residents and taking only $40 from them for the same 50-50 breakup, then we are expecting $60 from the non-residents, right? So if we price it so aggressively that no one from outside comes in to buy, then we are left having to fund the cemetery from residents only and that would make us upside down. So we have to be careful about that. I understand we have to price non-residents more, but you have to come back and tell us what that right mix is.
Right.
We don't want to price it such a way that no one comes in to buy.
And so in some of our calculations that we've done to create that number, we are basing it on resident cost to make sure we're coming out equal. Now, that could slip and fall depending on how many sales happen, which is why we need some of the non, the higher-priced non-resident sales or standard fee sales to make up for that. So yes, but we also still are making sure our bottom line is based on the resident rate. So it's a mix, it's a mix of both.
I'm done, I'm done after this, I promise.
You're already three times in.
I know, I'm excited about this, so we're going to talk about it, no. So, Ramesh, I 100% hear what you're saying, you know, on this. I guess my question is, is that if, if we put some sort of like, you know, stop on non-resident sales and stuff, will that put the fund in jeopardy to where, you know, it won't be able to sustain itself? Like if there was a, let's say, a year moratorium on selling, you know, plots to non-residents?
There's a potential depending on how many sales we get from residents.
Got it.
So that's what it's all based on because we're predicting certain percentages, but if we don't get those, then we need those non-resident rates to make up for that.
Well, I guess, to your point and then to everybody else's point, I would definitely love us to push that ratio as far as possible without jeopardizing the financial stability of the fund that is required to. -of the fund that is required to, to maintain the, the facility.
Okay.
So that's kinda where I, I lie on that, but.
All right, we've got one more presentation tonight. Um, do you have enough to move forward?
I believe I have everything I need to move forward, so thank you very much for this feedback and discussion, and we will see you after implementation.
Don't push her too much. All right, thank you very much, Sherry.
You're welcome.
Item C is discussion regarding the International Building Code, twenty-twenty-four edition, and chapter fifteen of the City of Capella Code of Ordinances, Mr. Schubert. And you're probably gonna cover this, but every time the new building code is published, we have to go through this, so we hear this about every two years?
Three years.
Okay, every three years.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, and my name's Steve Schubert, I'm the chief building official for the city. Um, so every couple of years, yes, we will be going over this, not just for the international code, but also the National Electrical Code. So just last year, we adopted the, you know, latest, greatest National Electrical Code. This year, we're adopting the, uh, newest, greatest international code series. In a couple more years, we'll be back for the next edition of the National Electrical Code. And that's how this keeps progressing, so that way we are providing the latest data available to our residents and contractors utilizing, uh, the newest methods for ensuring the public safety. Currently, we are underneath the two thousand fifteen international code, which does put us behind a lot of the municipalities that are comparison cities. And, uh, a lot of them currently are underneath the twenty-one code cycle and are in the works of adopting the twenty-twenty-four code cycle, just as we are. As stated, the building codes come out every three years. Unfortunately, we have a lot of changes going between the two thousand fifteen international codes that we are currently under, all the way up to the twenty-twenty-four codes that are latest. Uh, there's the two thousand eighteen edition, the two thousand twenty-one edition. And each time that the, uh, codes are, uh, put back down, they are based on the latest data available from resources such as the NFPA, engineers, architects. Everybody comes together to try and generate the codes. This also affects our ISO rating, which is, affects everybody's insurance rates for the city. Uh, just as fire department gets audited, we get audited as well. They use the B-KEGs and they'll rate, uh, the city on how long we've been underneath the la- latest codes, what our certifications are, and how stringent we are in the performance of our duties. Uh, we are going to try to stick as close to the codes as humanly possible for the code adoption, uh, simply because the codes are already generated by people who know a whole lot more about it than I ever will. And by sticking to, directly to the, the codes as they're written, that means that we are adding on the least amount of cost onto anybody in the adoption of these codes. Uh, Chief Oates is going to step up here, and he's gonna help me discuss what the changes are.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As you're aware, we're currently under the twenty-fifteen international fire code along with the, uh, twenty-fifteen building codes. And we're here to discuss the potential adoption of the twenty-twenty-four, uh, with amendments. There've obviously been a few changes since the previous code cycle. Uh, two of them that stand out for the fire code are the emergency responder communications and the electric vehicle charging. Uh, emergency responder communication system is an antenna system that enhances first responder radio coverage inside of buildings. Uh, typically, our system operates well without these systems due to the topography of, of Capella and the Intec region. Um, and our area is pretty small. We have an antenna over on the, uh, uh, wagon wheel water tower, um, for ours. But, uh, however, there is some construction, uh, issues like low-e windows that are installed in current, or new buildings. Uh, concrete walls, things like that affect radio coverage. So we do have buildings that, uh, we will have to require the, uh, emergency responder communication system in. We don't typically have the folks install that immediately. We tell them to leave the pathways there. So if, if and when the building is completed and our radios don't work, then they can easily install the system. We don't hold up certificate documents, and we don't hold up anything like that. But, uh, we don't expect them to spend the money on something that may not be necessary. We just have the electrician and/or the, the data person leave the pathways available in case the system has to be installed. Uh, the electric vehicle charging, unfortunately, the twenty-twenty-four international fire code still does not have anything in it about charging stations, as you see there. Um, so we're proposing to adopt a COG-recommended amendment in the, in our amendments to mirror exactly what COG is recommending. Uh, the amendment includes a, a power disconnect for fire department use, as you can kinda see that red box there. Um, it's a box that only the fire department has access to, that when we access that box, we can pull the power that is, uh, accessed, or that is feeding the, the charging station. So that's just one of the biggest changes that's, that's out there. Um, and it also designates where charging stations can be located, especially in parking garages. Requires the charging station, obviously, to be on the first floor, adjacent to an entrance, uh, a hundred and fifty feet of a fire lane, and/or on the top of a parking garage, still near a stairwell and/or access of the fire department. And those are really the biggest changes in the fire code, believe it or not, in the last nine years. There hasn't been much else out there, but, uh, you do have a copy of all of our amendments in your packet, and, uh, obviously, at a later date, if you have any questions on those, we'll be here to answer them. But, back to Steve.
I agree.
I know, yes.
Sir? How many, how many electric vehicles charging stations do we have in town?
Um, permitted? So, uh, we know of several, obviously, Market Street, Walgreens. Um, those are the type of ones that we're, we're talking about. Those are, those are the only two that I'm aware of off the top of my head. I mean, I probably go back and look through the permits and see others, but there's only those couple that I'm aware of off the top of my head.
There, there have been general inquiries from larger companies such as Amazon and stuff like that who have, uh, looked into the possibility of adding electrical vehicle charging for their employees.
Yeah, the hotels, things like that have been asking for them as well, so that's what we wanna be prepared for.
Okay, thank you. Rihanna?
Sorry, and I may have missed this in here, but, um, this is for business locations.
Correct.
Right? What do we do on, for, on the residential side? Anything?
So the residential side is actually based on the manufacturer installation method. Uh, whether it's Tesla, Prius, you name it. The manufacturer for that electrical charger dictates how that equipment gets installed. So they'll tell us how far it has to be from certain things. It'll tell us what size conductors are supposed to be going to it, what size of brake they're supposed to be. So it's based on manufacturer installation method. We do have an amendment to that requiring that the bottom of the equipment be at least forty-eight inches off the finished floor, if it's in a garage, just to make sure nobody's gonna back into it.
Okay, so a resident has to get a permit to have one at home, and then they have to meet those requirements that you have from there. Okay, perfect, thank you.
So, uh, regardless of the code cycle, that doesn't change. Hey, that's how it's currently handled.
Thank you.
Bijou?
Yeah, I just, yeah, yeah, I just asked that question. Do you know how many permits that we issue for residents?
It varies. Uh, on average, I'd say probably about two a month. Sometimes I'll get three in a week, and sometimes it'll be a couple of weeks before I get any at all, and then another one'll come in.
So do you have a number total, how many we issued?
Uh, I'd have to guesstimate that, um, and I do get hit in the head a lot, so I would not trust that guesstimate, but I'd say probably about thirty a year total.
So total number in the, in the city, I think is what he was asking, yes?
Uh, total in the city, I'd actually have to start digging through, because that's something that would predate me. Based on information from the industry, electrical vehicles were not as popular as they were probably about ten years ago. So ten years ago, it'd be safe to say we probably got one, if any, per annum. And then as time progresses, up to current, it would probably increase per annum. Right now, if I'm running about thirty, last year, chances are probably about twenty-five. Year before that, probably about twenty. So I think it'd be, uh, fair estimate, say, we probably have less than a hundred in the city.
Okay. Permits?
Permit.
Cause all the permits-
It's the magic word.
That's probably-
Just a two-twenty, just like you can have for your, your drive.
So, the equipment is easily purchasable. You can buy it from anywhere. And so there, there's no barrier to obtaining the equipment and just go ahead and do it yourself. Home Depot does it for water heaters, so you can go to Home Depot versus the water heater, swap it out over the weekend. Uh, if the city's unaware of it, then nobody ever knows.
My decent sum of cheese.
Can I just add something then? You made a really good point, Bijou, of number of people that permit, but could, could we do some, like, work with Hannah or her team and do some sort of just refresh on sending out information about, you know, getting a permit and-
That actually is one of my goals for twenty-twenty-five.
Okay, yeah, so putting out the information and educating.
May, May is actually Building Safety Month.
Perfect.
So, uh, starting in May, I'm going to try to be more proactive and try to get stuff out into the newsletter on, this is how you find a contractor, this is how you find a leak in your house, this is how you repair a leak in your home, stuff like that. Basic information that it would be beneficial not just for our residents, but also our contractors, so that they can come across and go, oh, I never thought about it that way.
Yeah.
Or, you know, they can contact me and say, hey, Steve, have you ever thought about it this way?
No, perfect, thank you.
Jim?
Hey, uh, so the IBC only applies to commercial, or is it also applied to residential?
So, the, the way the building codes are set up, uh, at the very beginning of each code book, it says what it is relevant to. So you open up the International Residential Code, and it will tell you, this pertains to one or two family dwellings, three stories or less from grade. So even if it's a single-family dwelling, but it's four stories, well, that now falls underneath the International Building Code, not the International Residential Code. And also in the International Building Code, you have chapter three, which dictates the occupancy types, which also affects how the building can be constructed. The International Residential Code has no references to occupancy type, because it's self-explanatory. One or two family dwelling, three stories or less from grade. If it doesn't fall underneath that, then it's the International Building Code.
So we're only looking at the IBC now?
No, we're looking at all of them. That's why there's the epic volume of amendments and everything else that goes along with it, so.
Cause I saw some residential stuff in there, and I was-
Yes, so the, I, the portions that we're amending for the adoption are things that we have historically amended. Uh, things such as what is exempt from a permit. We're trying to stick to that as we historically have, which is also a COG recommendation. So not a whole lot's changing, we're not really different from anybody else, we're just on the latest edition. Um, things that have changed that I, uh, amended out for the twenty-four code cycle is stuff like alternating tread device. If anybody has ever heard of torture from Hades, it is an alternating tread device. Think of it as a set of stairs, or half-stairs, half-ladder, where you have one step here, about twenty-four inches. You've got another step here, and there's a metal rail between the two of them. That is designed for firefighters to be able to get up on the roof. Trying to get up that thing in my clothes is very difficult for me, and I've got long legs. I cannot imagine trying to do that in full gear. So for commercial properties, in order to get up on the roof, they need to provide, either provide a ladder, stairs, or some other compliant device. They just cannot use the, uh, alternating tread device, because I would not want to be a EMT or firefighter and trying to get down that thing with somebody on my shoulder.
Ramesh?
Thank you, Mayor. Steve, thanks for the presentation. I'm just trying to think ahead, uh, for our residents that may be upgrading or, uh, remodeling their homes. Uh, do you expect there'll be a sticker shock as a result of moving to this new standard?
So, that, that's kinda hard to define. It really depends on this, you know, the specific scope of work. And even if there is, this is going to be standard for every single municipality around it, so there would be no escaping it. Um, right now, the state dictates underneath different portions of state law what the minimum standards are, what the minimum code addition is. They are going to be amending this. National Electrical Code gets amended automatically. As soon as the twenty-twenty-six National Electrical Code comes out, it is adopted by state law. The twenty-twenty-nine, by state law. And the other additions are gonna start doing that, like Texas Department of License and Regulation, that is over electricians and, uh, mechanical contractors, they're going to adopt the latest bridge. So, at the end of the day, there is going to be costs that are incurred along with the code adoption, but it's gonna be ignored by the industry, because it has to be. A good example is, uh, like a repipe. Everybody has slab leaks. There's no escaping it. If you've got a house that is more than twenty-five, thirty years old, chances are you're gonna end up with a slab leak. Well, underneath the new energy codes, any pipe that is three-quarter inches or larger has to be insulated with one-inch-thick wall insulation. And that is to try and retain that heat all the way through to where it starts branching down to the half-inch lines. Right now, you don't have to insulate it, not unless it's up in an attic or unconditioned space or something like that. Are the plumbers gonna charge extra for it? Absolutely, because it can't work for free. But it's going to become an industry standard, so whether they're paying the extra now or paying it in a year from now, you're gonna end up paying it at the end of the day, and it's, it's in scope.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Oh, my pleasure. I, I do have more slides, if anybody has questions like that, but I'm more than happy to end on this note, because I actually have one-hundred-and-seven slides in case you guys had specific code questions.
I think we're great.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
All right, the time is seven-twenty-two. We're, we're at the end of work session, and we'll be moving into the council chambers for the regular city council meeting at seven-thirty. Good evening, everybody. We have recess from work session and we'll be convening into the regular session of the city council at 7:30. Thank you. Good evening, everybody. The time's 7:30 PM, and we're here for the regular session of the Coppell City Council. Just as a reminder, persons wishing to speak during our citizens' appearance or the public hearings, must sign the appropriate register located outside the council chambers and list your home address. This evening, we have Melody Cordinas with the Allies Interfaith Group here to give our invocation, and then we'll follow that with the Pledge of Allegiance, so please remain standing. Melody?
O thou kind Lord, this gathering is turning to thee. These hearts are radiant with thy love. These minds and spirits are exhilarated by the message of thy glad tidings, O God. Let this American democracy become glorious in spiritual degrees, even as it has aspired to material degrees, and render this just government victorious. Confirm this revered nation to upraise the standard of the oneness of humanity, to promulgate the most great peace, to become thereby most glorious and praiseworthy among all the nations of the world. O God, this American nation is worthy of thy favors and is deserving of thy mercy. Make it precious and near to thee through thy bounty and bestowal. Thank you.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have two proclamations this evening, and the first one is a proclamation designating the month of April 2025 as Volunteer Month. I'm going to ask Ms. Ashley Owens to join me down front. So it's good to see everybody, and I want to get a guarantee that everybody's going to stay for the entire meeting, right? Okay, thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, whereas the entire community can inspire, equip, mobilize people to take action that changes the world, and whereas volunteers can connect with local community service opportunities through hundreds of community service organizations, as whereas the National Volunteer Month was established in 1991 has grown exponentially each year, and whereas during the month, all over the nation, service projects will be performed and volunteers recognized for their commitment to service, and whereas our city's volunteers are vital to the city of Coppell's future as a caring, engaged, and connected community. Now therefore, I, Wes Mays, Mayor of the City of Coppell, do hereby proclaim April 2025 as Volunteer Month in the city of Coppell, Texas, and urge all citizens to be inspired and encouraged to seek meaningful opportunities to volunteer in the Coppell community. It witnessed thereof, I've set my hand and caused a seal of the city to be affixed this eighth day of April 2025. And I want to thank everybody for being here, and I think Ashley had a few things to say. Ms. Owens?
Thank you. So, on behalf of the volunteer coordinators, I serve as the volunteer coordinator for the boards and commissions. I'm deeply honored to be working with you all on a weekly, daily, monthly basis. You are the reason that we get to do all the things that we get to do, and it's just a great honor to be able to say that Coppell has the best volunteers in the world, period. And so I just wanted to recognize you all, but also remind you, please come to our volunteer appreciation event on April 17th. Please go out and look at the volunteer impact report, that tells your story of all the work that you have done all year long. Just thank you so much for what you do, I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
I think that Ashley said most everything that needs to be said, but our volunteer habits make the Coppell community what it is, and we really do appreciate everyone for what you do. Counsel, anybody have anything they want to add here? Councilmember Prem Kumar?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to reiterate what Ashley just said, I think Coppell volunteers are the best. I saw a stat that we had so many hours that it added up to, was it $10 million or close to... So, that was based on a very low rate. I actually think you guys are four times that. Thank you, thank you for all that you do. The one request that I have is find a friend who has not volunteered and rope them in for the next year, one friend each, thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Hill?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I want to thank all you guys for your time and your dedication, you know, taking time out of your busy lives to devote yourself to the city of Coppell. It means the world to us and to the community, and you have a huge impact, so thank you guys.
Councilmember Matthew?
Thank you very much, Mayor. I also want to echo what other councilmembers already said. Thank you for your service to the city of Coppell. I do see a lot of T-shirts, CPAC here, Neighbors Helping Neighbors, I see there, and boards and commissions, and there are so many volunteer organizations that we have in the city of Coppell. Like Mayor mentioned, without your service, we won't be able to function the way we are today, so thank you again.
Councilmember Carroll?
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Owens was correct in everything that she said, and how wonderful it is to work with all of you, and I will tell you, my wife, Tiana, and I both, we make an effort to tell our girls and teach our girls that whether it's your school, or your church, or your city, or your community, you need to serve, you need to be involved and you need to be serving. So, the example that all of you are making to the generations that are coming behind, it's immeasurable, because they need to see the example of this is what we do when we are in a community, is we serve each other, and so thank you for doing that. And I love seeing a lot of our young people that are involved as youth volunteers and youth members on some of our boards and commissions. So thank you for everything that you do and the example that you set in this community.
Councilmember Hinoza Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll echo what all the councilmembers said, but honestly, just thank you. I know so many of you personally, I started as a volunteer with many of y'all personally with CPAC to serve and Coppell leadership many, many years ago. And we always say too, that when we're having our interviews with boards and commissions, or Neighbors Helping Neighbors, or other things, like so many people show up, and that's such a good problem to have, it's like, people want to give and volunteer and be willing to be that, you know, everybody has busy schedules, but the fact that you make this a part of just your everyday life, and that you're willing to give back to this community just means so much, because Coppell is Coppell, and all the little things that we do. So, all that to say is thank you all so much, and, you know, we really appreciate it.
Councilmember Walker?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, Martin Luther King Jr. said that life's most persistent and urgent question is, what are you doing for others? Thank you for answering that question for our community, we really appreciate it.
So, Mayor Pro Tim Neville's?
I was just waiting until the end. Listen, I can't say anything any different or better than my colleagues did, I just want to say thank you. So blessed to live in a community surrounded by people who give time, effort, and energy to just make where they live a better place. So thank you guys for making Coppell a better place, that's really all I can say, but thank you guys so much, we appreciate you.
And I'm sure we're going to announce it a little bit later, but I got very excited tonight, when I got here tonight, because I got my Neighbors Helping Neighbors T-shirt tonight, and that's coming out Saturday, so that's a big event for me, I really enjoy that, and I'm sure I'm going to see everybody out there. But I think we have a proclamation to give to Ashley, and we get Sam to do a photograph, and there we go, so, no, 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 you can get over there. Item number seven is a proclamation designating the week of April 6 through the 12th, 2025 as National Library Week, and I'd like Alexis Welburn to come forward and help me out. Did you have a large, did you have friends to come with you?
Oh, yes, please, friends, join me.
All right, whereas libraries provide the opportunity for everyone to pursue their passions and engage in lifelong learning, allowing them to live their best life, and whereas libraries have long served as trusted institutions for all members of the community, and whereas libraries strive to develop and maintain programs and collections that are diverse as the populations they serve, and ensure equity of access for all, and whereas libraries adapt to the ever-changing needs of their communities, continually expanding their collection services and partnerships, and whereas libraries play a critical role in the economic vitality of communities by providing internet and technology access, literacy skills and support job seekers, small businesses, and entrepreneurs, and whereas the Cosby Library and Community Commons has been serving the city of Coppell in all these ways and more since 1974, and whereas libraries, librarians, and library workers are joining library supporters and advocates across the nation to celebrate National Library Week. Now therefore, I, Wes Mays, Mayor of the City of Coppell, do hereby proclaim the week of April 6 through 12th, 2025 as National Library Week, and it witnessed thereof, I've set my hand and caused a seal of the city of Coppell to be affixed this eighth day of April 2025. So thank you very much, and I'm going to give my little story... Thank you. I'm going to give my little story, and it's probably getting a little bit old, but whenever I've done interviews for the library board, those are the most fun interviews I've ever done, because you folks are so passionate about what you do, so it's just a big thank you from me to you. So, did you have a few words you wanted to say?
If you know me and the city, I always have something to say. Thank you, Mayor Mays, thank you, councilmembers, for all of your support for the work that we do at the library. I know all of our team members feel very supported at all times by the city, and thank you, moreover, to our library board and friends of the library members that have joined us here tonight. If you didn't know, this year's National Library Week co-chair is actually Reyna Telgemeyer, who we were able to host last year at the Art Center, and she is an author and cartoonist, which makes sense, because this year's theme is Drawn to the Library. So we know that everyone comes to the library for different reasons, and they keep coming back to our library because of the relationships that are built, and our amazing staff, and all of the hard work that is put in by our volunteers to make our programming great. So we hope that you'll join us, if not this week, then in a couple weeks when we start our exciting summer programming, but no matter what your reason is for joining us at the library, we're happy to have you. We'll see you there.
Thank you very much. So just as a note, if you, in case anyone's curious about why I'm so passionate, my mother was a librarian, so, let's do a photo and then we can... Everybody move in close.
Yeah, all right, that'll work, right there, everybody good? All right, everybody big smiles, and three, two, one, and a couple... All right. Everybody big smiles, and three, two, one, and a couple more. Spectacular.
Thank you.
All right, item number eight is our citizens... Excuse me. Item number eight is our citizens' appearance. Persons wishing to speak must sign the register and list your address. Presentations by individuals shall be limited to three minutes each. Person signed up to speak will be called in the order that they signed up. No personal attacks by any speaker shall be made against any member of the council, the mayor, individual group, or corporation. There will be no comments or deliberations from the city council due to the Texas Open Meetings Act. We do have three people signed up to speak tonight, and the first on the list is Mr. Alan Marker.
First of all, hey, thank you, Mayor, council. After what I've heard come out of the work session, I'm ecstatic. So, I'm not going to use my full three minutes. I'm very appreciative of you guys. You know, this is very passionate to us, and you can understand why. I know you've all read my email and can understand. Please revisit the funeral home. I mean, this is something that is, you know, smoke coming up out of the chimneys during the day. I mean, you know, and this... We all know what that is, and it's very disturbing to see. And, you know, the signs that are put out for spring sales and things like that, you know, I mean, it looks like a used car lot out there sometimes, you know, with something. I mean, that's just... That's not a place for that type of advertisement. So, it'll come, you know, sometimes too quick. So... But, guys, I'm so thankful, so thankful. I appreciate it.
Thank you for your comments tonight. The second speaker is Felicia Raphael. And I think I forgot for Mr. Marker, but name an address for the record, please.
321 Plantation Drive.
I am Felicia Raphael. I'm at 620 North Capel Road. I've been a resident of Capel for 22 years, and you guys have probably never seen me. I keep to myself. I keep a low profile, try to stay out of trouble and do what I can. So, but I've been here 22 years, and I wrote notes, so bear with me. I may have to take a couple of breaks, but I put a lot of thought into selecting this community for myself and for my loved ones, because I thought it was a community of honor and integrity, respect, and empathy. It's a bedroom community, and as such, we don't offer everything that you would get in a larger community, but we do offer everything that a great community with a lot of heart can offer. I made a lot of sacrifices and put a lot of commitment here in order to remain a member of this community, sacrifice and commitment that has been rewarded time and time again. That same commitment and sacrifice was summoned when I chose Capel, and more specifically, Rolling Oaks, for the final resting place of my loved one. We're just short of one year. April 28th will be one year for me, and I'm here tonight to ask each of you as representatives of this community to honor the promises that were made when Rolling Oaks was established, a promise to maintain and operate that community as you would any other Capel neighborhood, because that's what it is to me and to those of us who meet there daily. Every day for almost 365 days, I meet there with my newfound family, which consists of others who have put their loved ones there for interment, as well as the staff who work to ease our pain. Let's see here. I visit Rolling Oaks daily. I have found an overwhelming, supporting, loving, and kind group of people who I'm proud to call a part of my extended family, from the families of those who I have... Who have interned their loved ones, as well as the staff members. I'm sorry to repeat, but I got to find my spots. In any event, I understand that running the city is a big job, and that running the cemetery sometimes is not a part of that job, but we have a community out there, and we would like to keep it an arm of Capel, representative of what Capel is in total. It's just another neighborhood full of people who have given their all to make this community what it is, and it means a lot to me. I'm very proud to be a part of this community, and even more proud to say that that's where I will lay in my final state, and I would like it to remain as is as much as possible under the supervision of this city, because I trust that you will operate it with honor and respect. That's all I have to say.
Thank you for your comments this evening. Our third and last speaker is Camille Gray.
Good evening. I just wanted to say that I'm so grateful to be here today.
Name an address for the record, please.
Oh, yes. My name is Camille Gray, and my address is 5121 Metal Arc Drive. Being here today was important, because I wanted to express why Rolling Oaks is so special. It's not another cemetery. It's special because of the community, the families that I've met since the past year when I lost my son, and I am so grateful to have been a part of such a beautiful place where my son has been laid to rest. I have peace. The environment is beautiful and amazing, and just to see the sun rise, it's important. I just want to say that what makes it so special is the people, the community, the families. We share stories, and we encourage one another, and in that, I am grateful for the leadership of the cemetery and the way that they conduct themselves with listening to the families, especially when we have concerns or things that we just want to talk about or better understand. And I'm really grateful that I chose Rolling Oaks because of its reputation and everything that I have been told is exactly what I see. So, I'm not going to say more, but just satisfied with the way things have been going and hope to continue to see things move forward in that way. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments tonight. Item number nine is our consent agenda. The consent agenda is routine in nature and is generally enacted in a single motion. These items have been previously approved through the budget or passed council actions. Any item may be pulled and considered separately. Full descriptions are available on the screens. Counsel, do you have any items you'd like to pull from the agenda? Councilmember Walker?
I wasn't going to pull. I was going to move. I'm sorry.
Is there... Councilmember Walker, back to you.
Thank you, Mayor. This time I would move that we approve Consent Agenda Items A through G as stated.
Thank you. Seconded by Mayor Protim Nevels. All in favor?
Walker, Hina Hosa Smith, Carol Nevels, Prem Kumar, Matthew Hill in favor. None opposed the motion carries.
Thank you very much. All right. Item number 10 is approval... Consider Approval of Award Bid Number Q0325-01 to Coal Construction for the construction of the Dog Park Reconstruction Project in the amount of $1,932,114 is provided for in the Capel Recreation Development Corporation Fund and authorizing the city manager to assign any necessary documents. Mr. Richter?
Good evening, Mayor and council. Thank you for having me here this evening to provide an update on the Dog Park Reconstruction Project. I come before you this evening with very good news. We have finally reached the finish line for the design and the bidding phase portion of this project, and at the conclusion of this presentation, I will be seeking your approval to move forward with awarding a bid for construction. I am very sorry. I thought the presentation was on the screen. Let's see. Sorry. Yep. There we go. All right. So, you may recall, staff came before you at the early part of 2023 to inform you of the challenges that city staff and park users were experiencing at the Dog Park. Following your direction, we engaged with our consultant, Teague Nolan Perkins, to begin the process of improving our dog park to meet the needs and expectations that our community has come to expect. The design was heavily influenced by a robust community input process that included two surveys for the community to voice their needs and desires for the new dog park. Following the surveys, staff did keep council and the Park Pals up to date on the process through email communication. A project design update was provided to the Parks and Recreation Board in August of 2024, and the design was processed was finalized in January of 2025. The design would have been completed sooner, however, but there was a brief pause in the process so that the city could focus its efforts to work out a solution with the Church of the Apostles regarding the parking lot at MacArthur Park. The short pause in this process was important for the city to stay on track and to avoid potential longer delays down the line. At this point, I would like to circle back to help you understand exactly what we discovered after each community input survey. I have provided a handout for you to follow through or follow with along to help compare survey feedback to the existing features at the current dog park. Survey one was conducted in the early part of 2023 and confirmed that the top priorities for our community included expanding the size of the dog park while adding an additional large dog area, as well as an all-weather synthetic turf area, improving the natural turf irrigation and drainage, upgrading the fencing and entrance gates to withstand the wear and tear from dogs being dogs, and adding shade structures while improving the drinking fountains. Survey two was conducted later in the year and confirmed to staff that the community also had an appetite for the following: natural shade to the west of the site in addition to the shade structures already accounted for, additional seating and gathering areas, lights, agility features, and wash stations. After design was complete earlier this year, staff put this project out to bid and received a total of three bids. They were all ruled to be unresponsive due to miscalculations and errors by all three bidders in their bid documents. Working with our procurement team, we discovered that the best path forward was to go back out to bid. During this next round of bidding, staff received nine bids. This time, only two were found to be unresponsive, and after working alongside our consultant, TNP, we found Coal Construction to be the lowest responsible bidder for this project, while providing the best value for the city. It is our recommendation to move forward with awarding a bid to Coal Construction for a contract that is under budget by approximately $668,000. This contract also includes two alternate bid items: installing lighting around the perimeter of the park, installing and installing irrigation in the all-weather turf section. If council would like to approve this project this evening, next step will be to take this project to the CRDC Board on April 21st for their approval as well. At this point, I would just like to say thank you to Mayor Mays and council for your support during this entire process. Your help along the way has us staff feeling really confident that this new and improved dog park will meet the needs and expectations for our community. This concludes my presentation. I am joined by Aaron Tinter, Assistant Director from Public Works, and Nick Nelson, our consultant from Teague Nolan Perkins, to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Walker?
Thank you, Mayor. So, just a couple of questions. I got involved in this early on with some folks that were really interested in it, and there were a couple of things that they wanted, or they were recommending at least, and I was kind of curious. One of the things was that, you know, the large-deck mowers that we would use where the grass is located sometimes would snag into the fence and create some problems there that would then create some gaps in the fence that made it problematic for the dogs. And it was suggested that some type of buffer that wouldn't have to be mowed would be around the fence area to prevent that. Is there any... Anything like that incorporated into this to protect the fence from the large-deck mowing equipment?
Yes, sir. That will be fixed in this project with a nine-inch mow ban. I think it's called mow ban around the perimeter. Where any fences, there's a mow ban there as well to help reduce... Or to help that not happen anymore.
Okay. And then, my second question. I know there was a lot of concern about, particularly in the winter months, you know, folks would get off work at 5:30. They'd try to get out there by 6:00. It's already dark, and there was no lighting. So, I presume that when we talk about lighting, is it the entire facility that will be lit up at night? And what are the expected hours that the lights would run?
So, that would actually be... We'll have to come back before you, before the project is completed, to update the ordinance to allow for that. I believe the update would have to be 9/11/3 P1, if I recall. That would be the ordinance that we would have to come back to update. But, it would be consistent with the rest of our lighted areas within the park system.
Which would be like till 9:00 PM, or...
I vaguely remember this because of another situation that came up. I believe it's like... Okay, so this ordinance is why we need to come back here, because it's a little confusing based on how you see it in the ordinance, how it's listed. But, I want to say 5:00 AM to 10:00 PM is for the lighted areas, and if it's not lit, then it's 30 minutes after sunset, 30 minutes before sunrise in the park. So, just two different kind of...
Yeah.
Two different things within the ordinance that we need to clear up and clean up.
No, that's totally fine. Just as long as just make a mental note that, you know, part of the concern was that folks that are working, you know, want to be able to get out there in the winter months with their dog, just as long as there's some lighting for a period of time to accommodate the use of the park by those people, I think that would be good. But, I'm getting ahead of our skis on this one, apparently, so...
Yeah, we will be back to clear that one up, yes, sir.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Prem Kumar?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. I don't have a question, just a comment for anyone watching this session. This is a big-ticket item, but this is also one of the highly requested feature for the city. A lot of residents have asked for it. You shared about the two surveys, and the Parks Board has approved the scope of this project. And, you know, typically, the city council defers to the Parks Board. Again, I'm not speaking for everyone, but most of us do. So, thank you for the effort.
Thank you. Mayor Protim?
Thank you, Mayor. Kind of along the same vein of Councilmember Prem Kumar, I wanted to confirm the funding source is from the Capel Recreation Development Corporation, which is, if I am correct, is a... Supported by sales tax. Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right. So, just wanted to make sure everybody know that, you know, you do see a price tag on this, but that is sales tax funded, so it's not property tax. And thanks to everyone who shops in Capel to get this new dog park.
So, I had one question. As a small dog owner, on the natural synthetic turf area, is that going to be mixed-use for all dog sizes, or how's that going to work?
Yes, Mayor. It will be mixed-use for all dogs of all sizes.
So, when the Doberman jumps on my little...
That'll be a thing you're going to have to work out with that, Doc. Honestly, though, we are... I do... It is in the plans before we open the dog park again is to roll out a video about expectations from dog owners and how best to serve one another when you're there at the park. So, that is in the works as well.
Okay. Well, my little terrier thinks she's going to be able to take the Doberman down, so it's probably not a problem. All right. Councilmember Matthew?
Thank you, Mayor. If we approve and CRDC approves, when will the project start and when will end?
So, the project is for the contractor we have selected. They've identified 180 days, and we are anticipating June 1st, or start date early June. So, we're anticipating... If you do the math there, I think you're somewhere around December 1st.
The second question, it says 1.9 million. If they finish the project sooner or quicker, are there any built-in benefits or any bonus for them to finish it early?
That one... No.
No.
There is none.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counsel, any other questions? Mayor Protim. Oh, I'm... Mayor Protim?
Are we going to do the same thing?
I was going to do it.
Yeah. He called me first. All right, Mayor. I move to approve Agenda Item 10.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second? Councilmember Hina Hosa Smith? Councilmember Hinoza Smith. All in favor?
Walker, Hinoza Smith, Carol Neves, Prem Kamar, Matthew Hill, in favor. None opposed. The motion carries.
Thank you, counsel. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Item number 11 is a public hearing, so we'll open the public hearing to consider approval of an ordinance of the City of Capel, Texas, re-adopting, ratifying, and republishing and extending Chapter 9 of the Code of Ordinances, Article 9-19 Youth Camp Program, Standard of Care, and authorizing the mayor to sign. Mr. Wyant.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council. Yes, my name is Daniel Wyant, Recreation Coordinator at the Core. This item is routine in nature as an annual review process in order to be exempt from the State of Texas licensing process for youth camps. The Camp Doodle program is not licensed by the State of Texas, so we abide by the standards of care they put in place for municipal recreation programs. Camp Doodle is a successful day camp program and is offered for children from ages six to 12. We offer the program during all the major Capel ISD holidays. So, this includes summer, Thanksgiving, winter holidays, and spring break. This totals to be 15 weeks out of the year, and which almost every week is highly sought after. I will take a side note of saying this summer, we have already filled up 10 of our 11 weeks, so really exciting time. We hold camp at the Core during the school holidays, and then we partner with Capel ISD for summer camp to be held at a local elementary. This year, we'll be holding it at Lakeside Elementary. Each year, we serve around 1,600 children combined throughout these breaks, and we have positive feedback through our community about the program and what it offers. No changes have been made to the standards, so tonight, we're recommending approval for the youth program standard of care for 2025 and asking you to approve the ordinance. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Counsel, any questions for Daniel? We had nobody signed up to speak at the public hearing, so with no further comments or questions, I am open for a motion. Mayor Protim Neves.
Thank you, Mayor. I closed, or I moved to close the public hearing and approve Agenda Item 11.
Wow. I had three simultaneous seconds here, so I'm going to go with the one closest to me, which is Mayor, Councilmember Prem Kamar. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Walker, Hinoza Smith, Carol Neves, Prem Kamar, Matthew Hill, in favor. None opposed. The motion carries.
Thank you very much. Item number 12, I will, is a public hearing, so I'll open the public hearing and ask Mr. Steer to read it into the record.
Mayor, council, good evening. This is a public hearing to consider a text change amendments to the Code of Ordinances, Chapter 12, Article 1229-6, non-conforming signs, to allow signs excluding pole signs built prior to 1990 to be rebuilt in the same location with the same height and width, provided they're architecturally compatible with the main structure on-site, and authorizing the mayor to sign. At the council meeting on March 11th, 2025, council approved several amendments, including parking and definitions. This one was unintentionally left out of the required newspaper notice and therefore could not be heard at that same time. Since adequate notice has been published in the newspaper, so the proposed ordinance was a result of a retail roundtable held with retail developers in FY fiscal year 2023 to discuss future trends in retail. During the roundtable, it was a consensus that the current non-conforming signage was most likely never going to be removed and brought into compliance unless destroyed by fire or a natural disaster. These signs were built prior to the current ordinance. They're typically larger in size and greater in height than what the current ordinance permits and are considered legal non-conforming. If they could be rebuilt to the same height and width that they are currently, then the owners of the centers would consider rebuilding these signs to be more architecturally compatible with the centers and would be more uniform with the existing signage along the city roadways. On October 17th, 2024, the Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the proposed ordinance amendment, and the amendment reads, "If an otherwise non-conforming monument sign was built prior to the adoption of this ordinance and is not a pole sign as defined in this article and has been in constant use, it can be rebuilt in the same location with the same height and width provided it's architecturally compatible with the main structure on-site." That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. When did you present this to the council in work session? Was that in 2024?
I believe so. Yes.
If the roundtable was held in '23, then we probably...
Fiscal year '23, and then it took a while to get it to work session, and then it went back to PNZ, and it's finally made it back to you.
I did remember it. It's just been a while.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Walker.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Steer, first, I want to commend you and the other members of staff for having the retail roundtable, taking an input from our business community, and then incorporating that in a way that makes sense so that, you know, it just encourages a solid relationship with our business community. I really commend you guys for the way that you've, you know, kind of brought that sense of community forward. I did have a question about, so on the pole signs exclusion, so I know we've always excluded pole signs. Are there any non-conforming legal pole signs that currently exist, to your knowledge?
Yes, there is. I believe it's the Chase Bank that's on South Beltline, there is a pole sign, a true single pole sign.
So, are we simply saying that if that one was to meet its demise by virtue of a natural disaster or fire, as you'd illustrated as potential risks, that it would not be allowed to be rebuilt?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct. And it would not be allowed to be rebuilt as one of these proposed.
So, it's just going to continue as it is until such time as it's removed...
Correct.
...or destroyed by natural disaster or whatever?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Prem Kamar.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks for the presentation, Mr. Steer. I understand that the scope of the problem is that there are about five to 10 such signs in Capel. I am struggling with this request because what will happen is we'll have these five, 10 signs that'll constantly be legally non-conforming. My thoughts are, and I'll leave it to the council to consider, that we provide some kind of incentive, the city provides some kind of incentive to these businesses to make it confirming. And I think that way, we'll have a much cleaner, uniform look that our city is so proud to have. So, that would be my two cents. Thank you.
The, Councilmember Prem Kamar, the topic tonight is the zoning ordinance. We would have to take the funding of it up in a separate budget item.
Can I ask a follow-up?
Absolutely.
My understanding of the zoning ordinance is if it passes, these businesses can continue to be legally non-conforming, correct?
That's correct.
And that's what I'm opposed to, Mayor.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions, council? This was a public hearing, and no one had signed up to speak, so I am open to a motion. Councilmember Walker.
Thank you, Mayor. I would move to close the public hearing and to approve Item 11. That's stated.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'm sorry, Item 12.
12. Thank you. Do I have a second? Councilmember Hill, is there any discussion? Councilmember Prem Kamar.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to restate that the council consider not approving this ordinance request and actually go back and request the staff to work with those businesses to see if there is an opportunity for them to change if we either partially or fully fund the signs to be confirming to the city standards. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Councilmember Walker.
So, I, just to address what Councilmember Prem Kamar is saying, I think that the issue there is that because these are legal, non-conforming signs, the businesses have no obligation to do anything with respect to them, but there was the perceived risk that if something was to, you know, happen to them, they deteriorate somewhat where they're unsightly, then there was a disincentive for them to repair them for fear that then somehow if they changed enough of it, now suddenly they would have to get rid of that sign. So, and most of these are legal, non-compliant because they're larger than what we would allow with respect to your typical monument sign. So, I think it's my understanding, the reason I support this is just because, I mean, taking into account the sensitivity you've raised, which is certainly, you know, legitimate concern, but I don't think there's anything we can do to make these compliant. So, I think what we're trying to accomplish, as I understand it, is to at least allow these landowners to, you know, rebuild, repair, you know, refurbish the signs, understanding that they don't lose the risk of losing the sign and having to make it compliant, which is what I think that they want to avoid, so that we get a little bit more aesthetically pleasing presentation, they have an opportunity to refurbish it and maintain it in a way that doesn't put them at risk of losing what they see as a value to their business, and the community benefits from a more aesthetically pleasing signage. So, that's my understanding of the issue.
Thank you. Any more discussion? Councilmember, or Mayor Protim Neves.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Prem Kamar, I definitely appreciate the merit of what you're saying here is I do tend to agree with Councilmember Walker, just in the sense that, you know, I mean, according to that roundtable, what was reported to us was that they would much rather just let them deteriorate versus bringing them to a current conforming status. So, this does carve out an opportunity for them to maintain the size and the scale of the sign that, which I think that they really do appreciate, but still allow reconstruction, beautification, however you want to phrase it, to bring it up with some of the standards of the other signs that we have in town. So, I think it's, this potentially is a win-win for the property owners and for the city as a whole because it does, it will allow them to work on the sign and, I guess, better beautify that, you know, that sign and that location. So, that is why I'm in support, because I do want to support our property owners' ability to be able to, you know, raise the standard and raise the look of the signs and give them some sort of status to be able to do that. So, that's why I'm in support of this. And Councilmember Walker, I appreciate your comments to this as well.
Councilmember Prem Kamar.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Walker and Mayor Protim Neves, thank you for your comments. I completely agree with you guys. I am actually in support of this. If we have the opportunity to go back one time and ask them if they're interested to consider a partial or full funding from the city, that's all I'm asking. If it comes back, maybe next session, I'm definitely going to vote in favor of it. All I'm asking is an opportunity to ask them one more time. Thank you.
Mayor Protim.
Thank you, Mayor. So, I actually think, depending on how, whether the vote goes yea or nay, I think there's still the opportunity to have that conversation even after this. So, I don't want you to think that a door would be automatically closed. There's all, still all types of conversations we can still have, but I just don't want you to think that once a vote is done, you know, like those conversations are just completely closed, so.
Seeing no further comments, I'm going to, all in favor?
Walker, Hinoza Smith, Carol Neves, Matthew Hill, opposed. Prem Kamar, the motion carries.
Thank you very much. Item number 13 is a public hearing, so I'll open the public hearing and ask Mr. Steer to read it into the record.
This is item number 13 on your agenda. It is to consider approval of PD 313 R2-MF2, a zoning change request from Commercial to Plan Development 313 Revision 2, Multifamily 2, to approve a detailed site plan for a 71-unit, four-story condominium apartment complex on approximately 4.4 acres located on the east side of South Beltline Road and the west side of Sanders Loop, approximately 660 feet south of East Beltline Road, and an amendment to the 2030 Comprehensive Master Plan from Mixed-Use Community Center to Urban Residential Neighborhood.
Thank you very much. The applicant has requested that this item be deferred until the May 13th meeting. However, that request came in after the published notice, so the council does have the choice to continue to hear this item tonight or to defer it to the May 13th meeting. This is a public hearing. There were no, no one signed up to speak, so... The choices up to the council. It's on, Mayor Protim.
Mayor, just a confirmation, if you will. So, this was the same project that was submitted, was that at the end of 2024? Is that correct? Timeline, I guess, not really matter, but it is the, it's the same project, correct?
Yes, it is.
And it's my understanding that there have been no notable changes or no changes at all to the, to the project, is that correct?
Correct.
All right. So, and then if it's my understanding, since this project was brought before the council before and there have been no changes, the council voted this project down, was that by unanimous vote?
I believe it was.
Okay.
And I shouldn't say I believe, yes, it was.
Okay. All right. Just making sure that I recall everything correctly. So, I'm happy to do whatever the council wants to do, but I've just, if this has already come before the council, do we need to revisit this again or table this topic? I'm just asking the question out loud.
Councilmember Walker.
Thank you, Mayor. I mean, I think the concern that I have about deferring is I, there's nothing to be accomplished by the deferral. The planning and zoning has again declined this. It's the same submission that council has already rejected once on a unanimous vote. The PNZ staff during the report before the PNZ, this most recent occasion, noted that it was the same one that council had declined, and it was still put forward to a vote on PNZ, which declined it again. It would take a supermajority of this council to overturn PNZ, given their declination of the application. There's nothing about the submission that could change between now and our next meeting without having to go back through PNZ first. So, I think as a result, the deferral does nothing. There's nothing that can be accomplished by the additional time. There's nothing that can be modified with respect to the submission during the interim period. Any modification would then require a resubmission to staff and a resubmission to PNZ before it would come here, and then we would be looking at something different. So, presuming it was changed, so I, I think we should just follow through as PNZ did and vote our conscience as a body, and to the extent that the applicant wants to resubmit a different application or to modify this application and go back through the process, he certainly has that right, and no one would decline that. So, I don't see any, there's absolutely zero reason to have a deferral. So, I would be in favor of going ahead and voting and then letting the applicant decide whether or not there's some modification that he would want to seek to make in going back through the process.
Thank you. Councilmember Carol.
Well, thank you, Mayor. I was in favor of letting the citizen to table this and postpone until the next time, so that was going to be my vote. To Councilmember Walker's point that there's nothing to be accomplished, I think that's fair, but I do think there, he has gone, come back through the process, and so he should have a right to postpone it if he so chose to do so. So, that would be my, I'm okay tabling it or postponing it to a later date if that's, if that's what he had requested.
Councilmember Prem Kamar.
Thank you, Mayor. I concur with Councilmember Carol. While this situation is different from what we have faced in the past, we have also had situations where the applicant has requested for a postponement, and we have allowed that. And in this case, I think we should give the applicant the opportunity to address the council, even if the underlying situation has not changed. So, my vote would be to allow the applicant to postpone.
Councilmember Matthew.
Thank you, Mayor. I was not...
I was not present when we took the last vote, so I was not privy to all the discussions, number one. Number two, my understanding was five to one vote, was not a unanimous denial.
Was it five to one?
So those, so that's two points.
I stand corrected, it was five to one.
Okay, so with that, two points, I would like to extend the hearing to May 13 as applicant requested. Thank you.
All right. Any other comments? Mayor Protem.
Question for you, Mr. Steer. Did the applicant indicate why they wanted to delay the hearing?
Yes, sir. It was for their city, for their attorney to be present at the meeting.
For their attorney to be present at the meeting?
Correct.
Okay.
Councilmember Hill.
I just want to say I'm in agreement with Councilmember Walker. He was very succinctly spoke on the issue, and I'm fully with him.
All right, so I'm going to ask for a motion to continue the meeting, to continue the public hearing and the meeting to May 13, and then the council can vote to approve or deny that.
The applicant's here, I think you ought to hear from him, please.
Oh, okay. Does that, Mr. Hager, I have a question, and procedurally, if we're hearing from the applicant, does that mean that we're hearing from the item tonight?
Public hearing, so I think the applicant ought to have an opportunity to tell you why they want the extension, and that's the legal representative, and I would ask you to honor his role as an attorney for the applicant.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. Thank you, Mr. Hager. I'm Jonathan Vincent, 2323 Ross Avenue, and I'm not here tonight to address the substance of the hearing. We are asking that you continue this to May 13 and leave the public hearing open, and I think the discussion would benefit from that because my partner, Bill Ostrom, was going to represent this case tonight. He's otherwise engaged, so he asked me to be here instead just to, basically to handle this hopeful postponement with leaving the public hearing open. Also, our consulting team, you know, we have an architect engaged, some other discussion that we'd like to present on a more substantive level. So, you know, I understand what everybody's saying, but I think this case would benefit, in all fairness, from holding it to May 13 with the public hearing left open. And obviously, at that time, you had the prerogative to decide it as you see fit, but we think it'd be best and fairest for everyone to do that.
Okay, anybody have any questions? Okay, thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Councilmember Carol.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to leave the public hearing open and to postpone the discussion till, further until May 13.
Thank you. There's a motion to continue the public hearing to May 13. Do I have a second? Councilmember Prem Kumar, second. All in favor? This is, all in favor?
Hinojosa Smith, Carol, Prem Kumar, Matthew, opposed. Walker, Neves, Hill, the motion carries.
Thank you very much. Item number 14 is the City Manager Reports with Project Updates, Future Agendas, and Direction from Work Session.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This evening, got several points to go over. This coming Thursday evening at, that's April the 10th, we are going to be holding our Budget Town Hall at the Cosby Library and Community Commons. The format will be completely different, so we are trying to make sure that we have as many folks as possible to show up to be engaged with the process. We will have staff members there to answer questions related to the budget in 2040 and the very, various projects that are going forward. So we look forward. It starts at 6:00 PM. Again, that's this Thursday night at the Cosby Library and Community Commons. The Magnolia Park Trail, the work continues on that. The Lower Gabion Basket is complete, and the next layer is going in. Fire Station 5, Landscape and Hardscape will start this week, and the construction trailer is going to be pulled off this week as well, so that's a significant step. The Service Center, underground plumbing and storm drains have been started. That's not really exciting, but you know what? It's really important that that gets done first. DART continues to work on the punch list items at the railroad crossings. TechDOT, as far as the project at Beltline, the Texas U-turn over 635. Last week, the contractor was able to finish their full closure, which means that from here out, the only thing that will be happening will be some lane closures of individual lanes, but there will be no more full closures of the Beltline Bridge, so that's significant. And then, again, this Friday at 10:00 AM behind the Town Center here, we have the groundbreaking ceremony for the Veterans Plaza. Looks like the weather's going to be great, so really looking forward to seeing everybody out there again. That's being taken place out here on the back area of the Town Center complex. Mayor, that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Item number 15 is Mayor and Council Reports on Recent and Upcoming Events, and we already mentioned it, but Neighbors Helping Neighbors is this Saturday, April 12. The kickoff is at Town Center from 8:00 to 9:00 AM. Breakfast will be provided with work crews leaving somewhere around 9:00 AM. We appreciate all of our volunteers that give back to our neighbors, and we're looking forward to another successful event, and we've got these really cool shirts, so. So anyway, look forward to seeing everybody out there on Saturday. And yes, Mr. Lan.
Mayor, we talked about direction from the work session. I just wanted to go ahead and report for those that weren't able to attend in the work session. The City Council did give us direction to move forward with a community-centric ROMC, as far as Rolling Oaks is concerned. They asked us to move forward with the expansion, adding the roughly 1,900 spaces. They asked us to move forward with the pricing schedule that, based on the direction for a standard plot, would be more towards the higher end of the market, along with having a specific resident rate, and they asked us to move forward with setting up, I heard somebody call it batch, I'm not sure I'd call it that, but that a family, an individual or a family that is a resident of Capella or a family related to someone in Capella would be limited to six spaces. So we are moving forward with that. So hopefully, that answers some of that question that was raised a little bit earlier this evening for those that weren't able to attend. So, thank you.
Thank you. Item number 16 is our Public Service Announcements Concerning Items of Community Interest With No Council Action or Deliberation Permitted. Do we have any public service announcements? Councilmember Prem Kumar.
Thanks, Mayor. This Saturday is going to be a busy day in addition to cops appreciation and neighbors helping neighbors. There's a religious institution, Haveli, that is doing a blood drive, so if you're interested in donating blood, please get in touch with them. Thank you.
Do we have any other PSAs? Seeing none. Item number 17 is Necessary Action From the Executive Session. I'll call on Councilmember Hinojosa Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. I moved to, from executive session, I moved to approve, I moved to accept the recommendation of special counsel, which includes not referring the matter to a hearing panel and consider the matter closed with no further action necessary. Notice of the motion and action shall be sent to both parties.
Seconded by Councilmember Carol, is there any discussion on the motion or second? Mr. Hager.
Mayor, I would remind that since Mr. Neves and Mr. Prem Kumar were participants in the process, that they cannot vote. It's fine that they stay in the room.
All right, thank you. So all in favor?
Walker, Hinojosa Smith, Carol, Matthew, Hill, in favor, none opposed. The motion carries.
Thank you very much. Item number 18, there being no further business before this body, we are adjourned at 8:35 PM.